We ask for your guidance in the decisions that are made here for the welfare of this community and all of its residents.
Thank you.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, before we go to the approval of regular agenda, I have just an opening comment to make, and I know that maybe some council members may also have conversation regarding this, but with sadness, we announced that our former mayor, Richard Seb, passed away. He passed away Sunday morning. Mr. Seb was a longtime member of the community, but service to the community. I think about not only himself, but his business that he ran for many decades. But one of the things I know about Mr. Seb is he's generous with his time and his resources. You talk about much that he's been involved with in his life to make our community a better place. The numerous boards that he served on and just the willingness to make the city of Monroe the best place it could be. He will definitely be a loss for our community and a loss for many that are here. These are my thoughts and I know the council's thoughts. Go out to the family, his wife, Marge, and his son, Rob, and his daughter Cheryl, and our condolences. But if we could take a moment here for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. As we move forward, we will always be remembered when you see things in which Mr. Seb was involved in, and I'll stop there because I think there may be other comments later from council members. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the regular agenda.
Your honor, I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as published.
Motion by Councilman McLeans, supported by Councilman Lemoore, to the approval of the regular agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Eiko Angeli.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Please.
The consent agenda and for approval of payments to vendors, the amount should read
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion?
Your honor, number 3283.
Other items on the consent agenda council members wish to have pulled for further discussion? Your honor, are there any items on the consent agenda those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Items on the consent agenda. Seeing none, a motion would be ordered regarding the consent agenda.
Your honor.
Councilman Felder.
I'd make a motion that all items on the consent agenda not pulled for further discussion be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out.
It's a motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Lemoore, that all items on the consent agenda not pulled for further discussion be accepted, placed on file, and the recommendations be carried out. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Eiko Angeli.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Clerk, the next item.
The next item are presentations, communications, and public hearings.
Well, we have the item.
But don't we move that to council action?
Oh, I'm sorry, we moved to council. See, that's why the clerk keeps me on my, because we talked about this before.
Well, I am looking at Mr. Buds, just to double check that. All right, yay.
You're correct. We put it under the council action. I'm sorry, please go forward.
Presentations, communications, public hearings. Item 3277, the Exchange Club of Monroe.
Thank you. So I'm going to give a brief review regarding the proclamation that the council has signed and supports, and I look forward to passing here, is the proclamation regarding the Exchange Club of Monroe. They will be celebrating their 100th anniversary this year. When we talk about a social organization, we have many here in our community, but the longevity of the Exchange Club is remarkable to continue to provide service to the community. But it's an honor and a privilege that the mayor and city council will be given this opportunity to pay tribute to the Exchange Club of Monroe. You know, the pillars of the Exchange Club activities, Americanism, community service, and youth programs. There's much that they're involved with in our community. Rather be the, you know, the Goodfellas Paper, the eyeglasses for children, the holiday camp, which we hear much about and how it benefits children, the River Raisin Race for children, and the Ark of Monroe. You know, there's many opportunities which they provide for our public safety, our police officers, and the blue and gold banquets of recognition, the youth, the year accepting the challenge of Excellence Scholarship they provide funding for, and high school youth programs at Ida Jefferson, St. Mary's Catholic Central, and Monroe High School. You know, one of the more recent things, they always find ways to keep up with what's going on in our community. And back even during COVID and when things were getting difficult, the Exchange Club recognized there was the opportunity in a broad sense to pay tributes to our, all of our Monroe County veterans, and they created the Field of Honor, featuring over 500 American flags on display at the River Raisin National Battlefield Park. And they partnered with them for this recognition opportunity. You know, they're a service club that's proof that volunteers do make a difference in our community. Their club's contribution to community service is an example for all to do well. They are going to have their celebration of their 100th anniversary on Thursday, and the proclamation will be presented in person there. But I thought those that are here and those that are watching here are impact broadcasts that you learn about if you didn't know, some of the services that the Monroe Exchange Club provides, but also why we, as a council, support this proclamation with signatures. So I want to thank council and for the Monroe Exchange Club for all they do in our community. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 32, excuse me, 3255, CDBG Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, Public Hearing, and there are no comments on file in the clerk treasurer's office.
Very well. I don't know if there's, we've talked previously, I'll move right into the public hearings. We have four of them here. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing to see here if there's any comments regarding item 3255, the CDBG Consolidated Annual Report and Evaluation Report. I say annual performance and evaluation report. Any comments from those present here this evening? Any comments from council? Seeing none? I'll close the public hearing.
The next item is item 3279, Public Hearing Proposed Ordinance 21-007. The public hearing is to receive and review comments on that ordinance, and there are no comments on file in the clerk treasurer's office.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll move into the public hearings on these as well. We had a work session, we had discussion on those previously, and the council members, councilmen, that presented some of the proposals to the council for consideration. But at this time, I'll open the public hearing regarding item 3279, Public Hearing Proposed Ordinance 21-007 Regarding Code of Ethics. Any comments from those present here this evening? Seeing none. Comments from council? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing. Clerk, next item.
Next item is item 3280, Public Hearing to Receive and Review Comments on Ordinance 21-008. There are no comments on file in the clerk treasurer's office.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on item 3280, Public Hearing Proposed Ordinance 21-008 Regarding Fair Housing. Any comments from those present here this evening? Seeing none. Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing. And next item, please.
The next item is item 3281, Public Hearing to Receive and Review Comments on Ordinance 21-009. There are no comments on file in the clerk treasurer's office.
Thank you. This time, I'll open the public hearing on item 3281, Public Hearing Proposed Ordinance 21-009. This is regarding the cable television franchise, system franchise, and it does tie to the equal opportunity and items that were spoken to regarding the code of ethics and others. Any comments from those present here this evening regarding item 3281, Proposed Ordinance 21-009? Seeing no comments. Any comments from council? Seeing none. Close the public hearing. There may be discussion on those from Mr. Buds as we review those on the council action or from council. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is item 3264, Proposed Ordinance 21-007, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 58 Code of Ethics Up for Its Final Reading.
Thank you. Mr. Buds, do you have any comments to start these, and then if not, we'll move to the council.
Your honor, I would just say by brief introduction, these are the three ordinances that there was just a public hearing on, and three items for council action largely changing the anti-discrimination provisions in those three ordinances to broaden them to essentially read in all three categories: age, race, height, weight, religion, or lack thereof, disability, color, national, or sectional origin, sex, familial status, sexual orientation, gender, identity, or that of their friends and associates, to be the broader anti-discrimination provisions in those three ordinances that are for your consideration this evening.
Thank you. I guess I'll wait for council to bring it to the floor, and then I'll see if there's any comments.
Yes, your honor, I would move to adopt ordinance 21-007, an ordinance to amend Section 58-1 of Chapter 58 Code of Ethics of the Code of the City of Monroe.
Second. It's a motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Lemoore, on item 3264, Proposed Ordinance 21-007. I don't know if council has comments. I want to make a comment about this because I think that, I know Councilman Felder had brought forward some information regarding this and some thoughts of how the terms that were there, while pertinent and relevant, lacked, I'll just say, clear and concise, and up to today's date. I don't want to take words from maybe Councilman Felder wishes to speak too, but they tie to each of these, and the wording was important to make sure that all these reflect on this topic, that they all read the same, and that they're all inclusive of all the items that we talked about, not only in work session, but here in our council. Councilman Felder, any comments?
I just want to thank our city attorney, Matthew Buds, for working with me on these proposed ordinances to bring them forward before council, and council for considering them. I know I had the opportunity to sit down with community groups such as Embrace Monroe and Prism to look over some of the ordinances and update them in a manner which updates our anti-discrimination policy in a way in which it reflects the values that I know that council and the city of Monroe already have. So I appreciate the amendments being brought forward and them being hopefully adopted, and I urge my colleagues to vote yes.
Thank you. And Councilman McLeans, I know that you had some adjustments as well, some of the words, and was this one of the ordinance as it went through, and if there's any other follow-up comments you may have.
No, I'm all set, your honor.
And I thank council's discussion as we worked through that, and again, Mr. Buds, for your kind of putting it together in all of our conversation to make sure it's clear and concise on all of these proposed ordinances. If there's no other comments, there's a motion and a second regarding 3264, Proposed Ordinance 21-007. Clerk, please call the roll.
Before I call the roll, could I just offer a point of clarification? The motion says move to adopt ordinance. We're not there yet. We're actually putting it on the floor for the second reading, and then we will have it. And I'm just clarifying for everyone.
Thank you. Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Eiko Angeli.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-007, Chapter 58 Code of Ethics, An Ordinance to Amend Section 58-1 of Chapter 58 Code of Ethics of the Code of the City of Monroe. The City of Monroe ordains.
Shall this ordinance pass?
Councilperson Vining.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Eiko Angeli.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
The next item is item 3262, Proposed Ordinance 21-008, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 327 Fair Housing Up for Its Final Reading.
Your honor, I'll make a motion that we place ordinance 21-008, an ordinance to amend Section 327-2, 3, and 4 of Chapter 327 Fair Housing, and place it on the floor for its second reading.
Second. Motion by Councilman McLeans, supported by Councilman Lemoore, regarding item 3262, the proposed ordinance 21-008, as stated. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Eiko Angeli.
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-008, Chapter 327 Fair Housing, An Ordinance to Amend Section 327-2, 327-3, and 327-4 of Chapter 327 Fair Housing of the Code of the City of Monroe. The City of Monroe ordains.
Shall this ordinance pass?
Councilperson Vining.
Yes.
Jim, sorry, Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Eiko Angeli.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is item 3263, Proposed Ordinance 21-009, An Ordinance to Amend Chapter 244 Cable Television System Franchises.
Your honor, I'll make a motion that we place ordinance 21-09 to amend Chapter 244 the cable television franchise on the floor for its second reading.
Second. It's a motion by Councilman McLeans, supported by Councilman Lemoore, on item 3263, Proposed Ordinance 21-009, as stated. Clerk.
Councilperson Vining.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Eiko Angeli.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Ordinance 21-009, Chapter 244 Cable Television System Franchises, Operations of Franchisees Equal Opportunity, An Ordinance to Amend Section 244-7(c) of Chapter 244 Cable Television System Franchises, Operations of Franchisees Equal Opportunity of the Code of the City of Monroe. The City of Monroe ordains.
Shall this ordinance pass?
Councilperson Vining.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Eiko Angeli.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Next item.
Next item that I have was pulled from the consent agenda. It's item 3283, Approval of Non-Union Pay Plan.
Well, Councilman McLeans.
Your honor, the request is to increase the non-union pay scales by 2%, and then along, offer a $500 bonus payment to the non-union employees, which are primarily our department heads. I'm recommending to council that we increase the bonus to $1,500, due to the fact that during COVID, many of the department heads were on call, and they basically, working with the city manager, kept the ship afloat. And I think the bonus needs to reflect their commitment and their ability to work during the pandemic. So, your honor, I'll make a motion to approve a 2% increase for all pay grades and steps in the non-union pay plan effective September 26, 2021, along with a $1,500 bonus, and then also direct the city administration to review the pay compensation plan for all non-union personnel since it was adopted back in 2016.
There's a motion by Councilman McLeans, supported by Councilman Felder, regarding item 3283, Approval of Non-Union Pay Plan for the increased amount stated for the bonus payment. I'll see if there's any comments from council. Councilman Felder.
Question of fund eligibility. Was this money coming from, was it originally coming from, was it ARPA or CARES Act eligible?
I would not view it as such. I think if it was just, it would be an amendment to the general fund from the contingency line item. And I'm thinking it's roughly, and some of it, you know, in the case of the utilities director, some of that'll come out of water and sewer as well. But primarily the general fund, probably roughly about 8,000, 9,000.
Councilman Lemoore.
Your honor, thank you. Not that I don't think that our department heads are worth it. I most certainly agree that they are worth it. My main question would just want to have further discussion when we are going to increase funding kind of in an interval like this. So I'd just like to have a little bit less surprise and more forethought on it prior to approval of this. That's the only thing I'm thinking as far as that goes. Like I said, not that I don't think that they're worth it. I definitely think they're worth it, but we can't just keep on tossing money all over the place without really thinking it through.
Your honor, this was thought through, and I, based on a review of my packet, I had had a discussion with the city administrator, the city manager, and the finance director relative to what the impact was going to be, which in the overall part of the budget that we have dealing in the millions of dollars, I didn't think $8,000 was all that significant based on the fact that during COVID, we relied very heavily on the city department heads to be accessible throughout the pandemic, either here at city hall or remotely. But many of them were here, working in the building, while most of the employees were working remotely. And I just think that at some point in time, you need to reward the people that provide the level of professional service in order to keep the city running smoothly. And I think they did a great job during the pandemic. City Hall did not miss a beat administratively in the services that we provided. So now's the appropriate time to say thank you for your job well done.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that they don't deserve it. I'm only suggesting that I'd like to have prior knowledge of the conversation that went on. That's the only thing I'm asking, is that we, all of city council knows where the expenditures are going prior to the city council meeting so that we can deliberate properly at our meetings. That's all I'm asking. Like I said, I have no problem with approving it, just would like to deliberate properly and have this exposed properly prior to the meeting being here.
Okay, there is a motion and a second regarding item 3283, Approval of Non-Union Pay Plan, and the motion stated the amount. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Vining.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Eiko Angeli.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item, please.
I have no further items, your honor.
So comments at September. Councilwoman Vining.
Thank you, your honor. Glad to see Oaks of Righteousness here today. If you get a chance to go check out all the work that's being done there, please do it. We are literally serving thousands of people throughout the year, food, medical assistance, daycare, the grocery store, the entrepreneur hub that they provide for other entrepreneurs up and coming. And I'd like to see us as a city do as much as we can to support whatever funds they are eligible for. Until you get a chance to really go down and see all of the work that goes on daily, I really, I could be wrong, but I would say there's not any other agencies in the city working, serving as many people in the area, which is, of course, the highest concentration of poverty in the county. So I was glad that Nurse Sandy and Pastor Boone were able to come and share some of that. And thank you, Jeff and Caitlin, for working on that. Mr. Seb, one thing I wanted to say about him, where the Selma Rankins Community Gardens currently sit, he really worked with us on purchasing that land because we wanted to start a community garden. And because of his generosity, Mr. Mayor mentioned his, how much he shared his resources within the city, and he really worked with us on procuring that land and being able to have a community garden. And we are in our seventh year of planting, thanks to the city of Monroe, who allowed it to be a pilot program, and MCO P, who we worked with and were able to secure a grant. But all of that started because Mr. Seb worked with us on that land. Of course, we didn't really have the money to purchase that land, but because of his generosity, we were able to do that and have a sustainable garden. And again, we're in our seventh year of harvest. So I would like to offer my condolences to his wife and children and extended family. He was a good man. Sometimes forceful in his opinions and whatnot, but that was the thing I liked about him. So my condolences to the family. That's all I have, your honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lemoore.
Thank you, your honor. Yeah, you are definitely correct. There's going to be a lot of comments about Mr. Seb. What a great man to the community, what a great man to the city of Monroe. He led in a very gracious way. He gave his time, his money, and his effort, and he speaks volume of what, volumes of what people should be doing for their communities, and that cannot be understated. And I would like us to really think seriously about having a day in his honor on behalf of the city of Monroe here. His passion for the city was unmet by anybody or, you know, equaled by no one that I know of. of. He will be sorely missed in this community, and my deepest sympathies and condolences go out to his family. He will be gravely missed. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thanks, Councilman. Councilman Felder.
Thank you, Your Honor. It certainly is worth noting, whatever a public servant like this passes, not only for the impact that they had within the community, but, you know, what Mr. Seb in particular was willing to give of his, of his time and his abilities. He was certainly an example of service to our community in the things that he does and that the impact that it continues to have. I think our police department currently has ballistic vests that were donated by Mr. Seb, as do, I believe, the sheriff's department as well. So hopefully, there is an impact both in life and quality of life, you know, in the future within our community that will be seen by his presence here. So it's certainly worth noting, and I thank you for bringing it up and certainly condolences to his family. Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Whitman.
I would also like to remember Dick Seb. He, he was kind enough to come out to Paula's house and work on the plumbing, which is so old that he was the only one that knew, you know, how to fix it. And he did. He fixed it for us, and he seemed to enjoy doing it because he hadn't done that kind of work in quite a while. So, you know, I am thankful to him for that, and he will be well remembered. I also want to mention the fact that downtown Monroe was hopping this weekend, and it was so nice to see, they had the recovery picnic at St. Mary's, and then there was a party going on downtown. And it's nice to see people out and about and enjoying themselves. And I had a really good time. So it was nice to see bands playing in the band shell again and doing, you know, the things that are meant to go on in your hometown. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman McLeans.
Thanks, Your Honor. Dick was never shy to give his opinion about any topic that was of concern to his. And while I was mayor for a few years, he was, Dick would show up every once in a while at the office to give his opinion on some of the actions that city council was taking or actions that we should have taken. Dick served for many years, probably longer than many of us have been on earth, on the historical society. He served on the Monroe County Historic Commission. Dick actually bought the first piece of property that was part of the National Battlefield Park, and he did it without asking permission from any agency. He just happened to see that the house on the corner of Elm and Detroit Avenue was for sale, and he stopped, and he bought it. And then he turned around and asked the museum if they wanted to use it as a satellite facility to start the whole community conversation on the value of the River Rays and Battlefield. He was extremely philanthropic. He was always behind the scenes, and everybody knew that if they had a legitimate request, he was the first one that opened up his checkbook. Many of the monuments and memorials that are scattered through town, downtown, over at the Finney Building, some over at the Soldiers and Sailors, those that are at Veterans Park, if they have donor plaques attached to them, you'll prominently see Richard Seb's name there because he was one of the first ones to give money to the cause. He was and will be remembered as an ambassador both for Monroe County and the City of Monroe. And I do express my condolences to his wife and his family. He will be missed, but his legacy will live on in many of the facilities that he helped fund and, of course, the expansion of the National Battlefield Park. He was pretty much the first one that has his thumbprint all over the battlefield, and he will be recognized. And I know that the National Park Service recognized him about six months ago as being one of the leaders in that project. That's all I have, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Let's all follow up first with Mr. Seb, just a couple additional comments. I think it's all been well said, but he is, as I said, giving him his time and his resources. But he did it because he saw the, a long vision for the community and getting people involved. Not only did he serve our community, but he also served in the U.S. Air Force, serving during the Korean War. So he had service to country, service to his community, and of course, service with his family. So he will be, he will be missed. And Councilman McLeans, yes, Mr. Seb found his way to City Hall, and I, as I've been the mayor as well, and had those same conversations. I don't think there's probably a mayor that, after, that came after Mr. Seb, that didn't at least have that conversation and some thoughts, and whether it be decisions or just things for consideration, and it was appreciated. There's a variety of items that are, as Councilwoman Whitman spoke to, of items that are in the community that have occurred. But so I'm going to go through a list of few that are currently on the schedule. And I think that as we've found our way through and monitoring, it can still be done so in a safe fashion that people take care of and have consideration themselves, but also others in health and safe fashions. But the Alzheimer's is having its annual walk. It's coming back this year. It's on St. Mary's, at St. Mary's Park as a start on Saturday at 11:00 a.m. Later that evening, there's Elvis concert that is down at the park in St. Mary's at 6:30. On Sunday, the bed race, which is annual, of course, we're bringing, coming back because there's, some of these were not held last year, but that is on Sunday at 1:00 p.m. And what a great cause, and under some leadership there with Kim Hooper and others that provide kind of a, bring value to our community for those that, children that do not have beds and locations that don't, that they raise funds to be able to provide those services. Also on Sunday, there's a car show and a fly-in out at the Custer Airport at 2:00 p.m. I think that goes to about 6:00 p.m. The last time I want to mention, it kind of ties back to the activities of the Historical Society. It is planned, I haven't seen the announcement yet, but I understand it's planned for historic cemetery tour at Woodland on, at, in the afternoon at 1:00. And I would recommend that you get, get in contact or watch the County Historical Society regarding that. So opportunities for a variety in which people can find things to do, as was said. I'll stop there. Clerk, Treasury LaVoy.
I just have one comment this evening. The City Hall has had a number of disruptions due to the construction, and since we're moving closer to the election, I just wanted to reassure the public that there is signage there, there are doors open, the front door has been closed, was closed today. I think it's going to be disrupted a few more days, but the Macomb Street entrance is now currently open. So we'll try to keep signage going so that everyone is aware how they can get in. If you're not comfortable coming during the day, you're not sure you can maneuver all of the construction, and I don't blame you, I had a little trouble myself this morning, so it's understandable, but feel free to come to the Dropbox in the evenings. There will be plenty of parking for you if you decide to take advantage of the Dropbox opportunity, and we collect from the Dropbox at first thing in the morning. There is a camera on it, so whatever you leave in that Dropbox will be safe. So that's one way to do it and not have to deal with, with the construction. Absentee ballots will be going out prob, no later than Wednesday, hopefully tomorrow, but no later than Wednesday, and those can be returned as soon as you receive them. If you would like an absentee ballot and you don't know if you've asked for one, because we're all very busy and we sometimes forget, so I understand that, or if you know you still want to get your application in, or may, perhaps you even still need to register to vote, please contact the clerk's office and we'll help you out with that. And just for clarification, this is the city election, so it will be the elected officials of the city that will be on this ballot. So that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just have one item that's pertaining to our, our leaf bag program that we have each fall. It's going to begin on Saturday, October 2, at our Public Services Building at 22, our 222 Jones Avenue, and it'll be open that Saturday, beginning at 8:00 a.m. till noon. Again, similar as the last few years, it's a drive-through. There's also going to be another Saturday service the following week on the 9th, and beginning on Tuesday, the 5th. It'll be open from 2:30 to 5:30 on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays each week through the end of the month. So we'll have somebody there staffed to distribute the leaf bags for the program, 50-bag max per household. And you'll see more information on the city website related to that.
Very good. Thank you. This time, any comments from those present here this evening, citizens' comments? Any comments from those present? Yes, sir. Name and address again, please, and...
Vehicle parking agenda that you have in the city ordinance? It says that a vehicle has to be parked on a hard surface, and the hard surface can only be concrete or asphalt. But we have a lot of dirt driveways, and we have a lot of people parking on gravel. And I have children growing up now, and we need more parking spaces, but we don't have the resources to put concrete. But we'd like to put gravel, but we can't. But when we park our cars there, leaving during the daytime, if it's there more than a couple of days, we get an ordinance violation for our car being parked on the grass or next to our driveway. So I want to see if the council can amend that so we can park, put gravel down and park on a gravel driveway. The second one of that is, is since I have, like, younger people who are now starting to drive, I have a lot of cars. I have seven cars, four drivers, so some cars sit more than three days. The city ordinance says a car in opt, if it sits more than five days, is considered operative. Well, if you go on vacation and your car's in your driveway, it's considered inoperative. That's what I've already got, one of those. Now, the city has worked with me and taken care of that by me explaining it to them, but why is that, how do we consider a car inoperative if it just doesn't move? Shouldn't there be more to that statement than just, it didn't move from my driveway? So if I go on vacation, like I said, 10 days, my car doesn't move, now it's considered inoperative. So I appreciate if the council would consider those. And I can give examples of people who are parking on gravel, and since they move during the day, the city inspector doesn't see them, but since I don't move all my cars during the day, I get from the ordinance, so...
So, well, I've jotted notes, I know Mr. Buds, our city attorney, probably reviewed the language of Mr. Pastu, jotted him some notes, where they, regarding gravel driveways, some, some hoes have started, have never changed from gravel and probably are permitted as is, but you're right, the ordinance does say that, you know, if they're put in afterwards, the gravel's not one of the options.
I wondered that, not to interrupt you, I apologize, but my with that was, when we sell a house, if we, if the plumbing's not up to date, or the electrical's not up to code, we have to bring up the code before we can sell it, why are we not doing the same with the driveways?
That's a good question I'll be asking.
Right, that's my question. Sorry.
We'll see how it is and what it is. And I know Mr. Pastu has your phone number.
Yes.
Because we spoke during the special meeting on the item, and we'll follow up and see what we can find that information out and get back with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from those, oh, yes, ma'am. Name, address, please.
I just wanted to...
We need your name. Your name and address, please.
My name?
Yeah.
Carolyn Kopez.
Okay.
K-O-P-A-C-Z.
Residence?
151 Mason Run Boulevard.
Okay, thank you. Please go ahead.
Last year, at the beginning of COVID, when they put in sidewalks on Fontaine Street, they cut the electrical line, and our president has been calling to get this fixed, and they keep saying, we're on the list, we're on the list. Well, it's a year and a half later, and we're still on the list. There's like five or six lights that are out on Fontaine Street, so it's very dark down that street. I even called maybe a month or so ago, and the person I talked to said they would call me back once they found out what's going on. I never got a call back. So I just thought I'd come in and ask.
Absolutely. So at Fontaine Street, I, Mr. Pastu will follow up with that, see if it's a internal DT or it's what we're, what the schedule is to get those repaired.
Okay.
All right.
Oh, he has your phone number as well.
He has your phone number as well, so.
Yes, he does.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes, name, address, or jurisdiction or residence, please.
Good evening, everyone. Katie Beth Davis, Pleasant Road in Monroe Charter Township. First, I wanted to thank everyone for taking the time to work on the language and the code of ethics to gear towards anti-discrimination language. I would also encourage the council to continue on the anti-discrimination path and reconsider the RFQ process for the relocation of the Custer statue. Since the meeting where the RFQ was terminated, Brian Newland, Bay Mills Indian Community Tribal President until May 2021, he was actually recently confirmed by the U.S. Senate as Assistant Secretary of the Department of Interior, following his appointment by President Biden in April 2021. He now runs the Bureau of Indian Affairs, and his successor to Bay Mills Indian President, fellow Bay Mills citizen and fellow lawyer, Whitney Gravel, voted unanimously with all of the other 11 federally recognized tribes that did sign on to the resolution for the Custer statue to be condemned and ask for its removal and relocate, relocation from a public, from public eye. Furthermore, Charles Sams III was appointed by President Biden in late August to oversee the national park system and approve their budget proposals. Assistant Secretary Newland and appointee Sams will report directly to the Secretary of Interior, Deb Highland, who is a full-blooded American Indian and citizen of the Laguna Pueblo Nation in New Mexico. Because of an action of the mayor and the city council, will be taking this issue to a national level, and will continue to fight towards the removal and relocation of the Custer statue. I also wanted to request that the Martin Luther King Bridge seek some attention with maintenance, restoration, repairs, painting, et cetera. And I also wanted to give my condolences to the Seb family. My family has done work with him in the past, and I would like to make a suggestion, due to his leadership in the City of Monroe and his military service, that instead of possibly giving him a day, that possibly could rename the Custer Airport after him and do Seb Airport. And again, that's all. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes, please. Name, address.
I'm Eunice Jones, 506 East First Street. This is the first meeting I've ever been to, but I have a few things that I've always wondered about. At one time, we had a beautiful mural painted on the side of the building on Front Street and Monroe Street, and then we had to paint over it, and it's gone. And I'm just thinking, what was wrong with that mural? I mean, I think our town could stand a little beautification, especially along the Riverwalk, where there are lots of blank walls that get graffiti painted on them, and then they're painted over in gray. If we hired some of our local artists to put some beautiful murals along there, wouldn't that be a tourist attraction? So I just thought maybe you might consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Eunice. Other comments from those present here this evening? Yes. Name, address, please.
Yep, Colbean, City of Monroe. So just as a backup, I want to say, reiterate that America is changing. Many people are trying to right wrongs. I just want to say that we're not going away, per se. We just, I know that we haven't been in attendance as much lately. Last week was a tornado on the city council day, obviously. But we are still hoping and expecting the city council will take some action on the Custer Monument, and of course, we would still like to see it removed, relocated somewhere else that is not in the city, not in its prominent position. I like to say that the only way to break orbit is to shoot for the stars, and a lot of people in Monroe seem to tell me that if I'm trying to shoot for the stars, someone's going to prevent my launch. I think that's pessimistic way of looking at life. So I think that we should and can and always are required to strive for excellence and strive to be better. And so I would ask you to join me among the stars and not just sit here gritting your teeth until we all pass away. So thank you for your time, and thank you for your language update and talking about that. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Other comments from those present here this evening? Any final comments? Seeing none, motion is in order. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Councilman Lamoore, supported by Councilman Felder to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Bining? Lamoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Mike Eklonjly?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you all for being here and for comments.